... the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 27, 2018 county commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phone. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white binder and Carol can help you with listening devices if you need them. She's up here in the front. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from February 20, 2018.
Move for second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $696,998.20. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second.
Madam Chair, we do have one bill for $333,000 for architectural services that kind of boosts our total for the week up. Without that, we're in the 600s, I think.
Thank you Commissioner Barth and welcome back. We missed you last week. I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Are there any questions for Carrie on item A?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B, consider a motion for exemption. Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Diva from Human Resources. We have a special action for your consideration this morning. You know that the county has a policy on hiring of relatives that prevents two people who are related from working in the same department. Tracy Smith would like to request an exception to that policy. She has two individuals, Timothy Hirschberger and Aaron Hanson, who are planning to marry in April, and she's requesting an exception to the policy. The reason for that, it's a fairly sizable department. It's our third largest. And in this case, neither individual is supervised by the other, nor does either individual have any type of supervisory role in the department. They're both directly supervised by different staff members. Neither one provides support or assistance to the other and neither one works even in the same physical area. It's a larger building. One individual works on one floor and then the other individual works on another. Tracy's also here if you have any questions, but those are the reasons she's making the request for the exception.
Okay. Are there any questions on this special request?
Would move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. We will do these in several sections again, item A and item B. Olivia?
Item A and B are both for South Dakota Department of Transportation. The first one is RDID 14034 for 2017 property taxes in the amount of $163.23. And the second one is RDID 14035, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $1,846.45, both tax exempt.
Look for a motion on those two.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Number, item C.
Item C is Don Halman, RDID 60517, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $2,802.97 due to a house fire.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number D.
D is Masjid Attaqua, RDID 52938, 2016 property taxes in the amount of $397.04, tax exempt.
A motion?
Move to approve.
And a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then we have three left.
E through G are all for the assessment freeze. The first one is RDID 32216, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $263.40. RDID 35043, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $611.28. And RDID 36100, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $744.93.
Okay. Is there a motion on those last three?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices and there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lane. There's none. Next is opportunity for public comment if there's anyone that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda. Okay, with that, we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a resolution for the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Reinspection Program. DJ Boothby, good morning DJ.
Good morning Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. Every year about this time, we ask you to pass a resolution electing to participate in the state of South Dakota's Bridge Reinspection Program. Federal Highway Administration requires bridges in the United States to be inspected every two years and box culverts to be inspected every four years. And so, every year, we inspect about half of our inventory and we participate in the state's program so that the state pays 80% of the inspection fees and then we pay 20% of the inspection fees. The state requires a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners to elect to participate in the program. And then, in that resolution, we also request that we work with Banner Associates, who is the engineering firm that we've worked with in the past several years. So, asking for your approval of that resolution that's been included in your packets.
And I would ask you to read the resolution.
All right.
Thank you.
Whereas Title 23, Section 151, United States Code, and Title 23, Part 650, Subpart C, Code of Federal Regulations, requires initial inspection of all bridges and reinspection at intervals not to exceed two years with the exception of reinforced concrete box culverts that meet specific criteria. These culverts are re-inspected at intervals not to exceed four years. Therefore, Minnehaha County is desirous of participating in the bridge inspection program using bridge replacement funds. The county requests SD DOT to hire Banner Associates, Inc., the consulting engineer, for the inspection work. SD DOT will secure federal approvals, make payments to the consulting engineer for inspection services rendered, and bill the county for 20% of the cost. The county will be responsible for the required 20% matching funds dated this 27th day of February 2018 at Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on that?
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is authorize the chair to sign professional services agreement between Minnehaha County and Infrastructure Design Group for the final design to reconstruct Highway 146.
Commissioners, the county highway department is working on a reconstruction project on county highway 146 from State Highway 11, south of Brandon, east to the Minnesota State Line. It's a seven mile stretch of road. We've completed the preliminary design work and looking to enter into final design. Typically, our final design agreements include the bidding phase of the project, but we're deciding not to include the bidding phase into this agreement simply because this is a really large and complex project and we don't know how it will be bid. As an example, we don't know if it's going to be bid in one complete package or two separate projects. And so, with that big unknown out there, we decided to only bring it through the final design phase that includes plans. There's a lot of vertical curves on this roadway that are unsafe. This is a safety-driven project. The right-of-way that's existing out there is primarily 66-foot of right-of-way and 80-foot of right-of-way. So there's a whole bunch of landowner issues and negotiations that are going to have to happen over the next year before we move into a construction project. So, the agreement has been reviewed by the state's attorney's office and it's for the total of $131,573. It's an hourly, not to exceed that dollar amount, type of agreement. And we look for your approval here of the agreement today.
Other questions for DJ on this one? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a motion to declare one, I'm going to annihilate that, one multipurpose copier asset, number 91080, for the purpose of transferring it from the highway department to the equalization department, DJ.
Commissioners, we upgraded our copier last year. It was about five years old. This is the copier that we run off our construction plans on. It's an 11 by 17 color copier and we wanted a faster processor. So, we upgraded our copier, had this one as surplus, and the equalization department was in need of a copier. And so, our purchasing policy requests the board to approve a motion to transfer the copier asset from the highway department to the equalization department.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
A motion and a second to declare the Keocera asset surplus property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Stainless steel?
Thank you.
It's not stainless steel. I haven't seen any of those yet.
Thank you. Item number 13 is consider a resolution to adopt the advanced investment policy for construction bonds, funds of the 2017A issue. Mr. Letts, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Bob Letts from the Auditor's Office. And I have before you today the advanced investment policy and resolution to adopt. And before we get going on that, I would just say, you know, if there's any other options that people want to look at, and I can discuss some of those options at the end of my memo here, we certainly would be open to that. Right now, like I said, the money is sitting in a money market account and it is earning some interest. And that is with, currently with American Funds from, that is, an associate of US banks. In working with the state's attorney's office, our bond counsel, the Auditor's Office is offering a joint advanced investment policy and a resolution to adopt the same. Same themes run throughout the two documents. Some notable points in moving forward with the requested action are, the trustee, US Bank, will remain our trustee. Number two, the funds would be invested in South Dakota FIT, but all transactions would be through our trustee and US Bank. The Auditor's Office, number three, the Auditor's Office would be working in conjunction with Treasurer's Office and utilizing our construction drawdown schedule to coordinate investment timing for liquidity and adjusting the investment scheme as needed for larger unanticipated payments that are not accounted for in the current drawdown schedule. County staff working on the investment portfolio would be from the Auditor's Office, myself and Kim Adamson, and from the Treasurer's Office, it'd be Pam Nelson and Amy West. Number four, all investments would be in accordance with SDCL 4-5-6, which outlines all types of investments that meet protecting the principal, mitigating the risk, and maximizing interest as possible with the payment demands of the construction drawdown schedule. We would anticipate from the preliminary information that the investments would be a system of laddered treasury notes, CDs, and/or money market funds. Number five, the advanced investment policy pertains only to the bond proceeds from the Capital Project Fund, which is the construction account of the 2017A bond sale. The county investment policy would remain in force for all other county funds. Number six, some endorsements from other jurisdictions utilizing South Dakota FIT have been provided. Although there's nothing of the magnitude of what Minnehaha County is investing, South Dakota FIT is now a competitive investment vehicle due to rising treasury note interest rates and invested funds, uninvested funds. Interest on the type of investments Minnehaha County can make have been limited since the 2008 recession, as have all funds that we've had invested, including Pam's. Action today, sought today, will be to adopt the advanced investment policy through the accompanying resolution to do so. I'd like to bring out a couple of things that I didn't put on here, you know. Last time that, when South Dakota FIT came and did a presentation, an invitation was extended to American Funds to come down and do the same. And they couldn't make the schedule work that time, but if you should so desire that, we would reach out to them again and try to arrange a date where all you Commissioners would be present for that type of a thing. Currently, you know, we could certainly stay in the money market. It's not as prosperous as it would be if we did the laddered T-notes, but it's certainly a fluid account. I mean, it's, we can get into that money quite readily to pay bills at any time. The other thing is, is even if the money market account makes somebody uncomfortable, we could certainly pull that out and just leave it in the checking account. And so, I'm here to answer any questions and I would also have you know that, you know, the money's in a money market right now, making some interest. So, as far as a huge sense of urgency goes, and you guys need some more information, we would certainly, certainly understand that and work to provide that.
Questions for the auditor?
The only thing, I mean, I had an opportunity to visit with Auditor Letts yesterday in the state's attorney's office. I don't, I mean, I think we were provided information about South Dakota FIT, thought the information that we provided, that was provided, indicated that this would be, that they would be suitable for this type of investment. I did have, my comment was more on the policy and I don't know if you wanted to wait for that or if you want to take that right now.
I think we can take that right now.
Okay. On the policy, there's just one amendment I would like to make before we approve that policy, and it's in Section 3. I would like to just delete the very last sentence in that delegation of authority section. The paragraph, the sentence right now attempts to address what happens if there's a leave of absence. And given the fact that we've got two different offices and the fact that the statute already addresses what happens if there's an absence in one of those offices, I just think that it would be clearer if we just eliminated that sentence altogether and just defaulted to set, to the statutory parameters in the event that there was some sort of absence in either the Auditor's Office or the Treasurer's Office.
I apologize, but can you tell me again where it is and which line it is?
It's, it's the very last sentence in Section 3. So, the sentence that I'm deleting is a sentence that says, "In case of extended leave of absence, the county commission shall appoint a replacement officer."
Here, sorry, I was in the wrong spot. That's why, so where is this?
Yeah, so it's that very last sentence.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Because we'd need a motion to remove that. And a second, to remove that. And pardon me? So I would need a motion and a second to remove that last sentence, "In case of extended leave of absence."
That would be my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments on that? Can I have you vote on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then we would need a motion to approve the policy with the amendment.
So move.
And a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments or discussion? Then we take a roll call vote on this particular policy.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Hi, Brother.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you Commissioners.
Move on to item number 14, which is authorize the chair to sign the construction manager-at-risk contract for the jail expansion. Carol Mueller.
Good morning Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is a signature that you will get to place on the CMAR contract. CMAR stands for Construction Manager-at-Risk, and this is the contract for the Minnehaha County jail expansion. The CMAR is a joint venture between J.E. Dunn and Henry Carlson, and they were selected from six applicants who responded to the RFP. This contract establishes the framework with terms and conditions for the contractual relationship between the county and the joint venture. But it does not establish a guaranteed maximum price. The guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, will be established and presented to the commission for approval prior to the start of the construction. And I'm not sure exactly what week that will be, but that will be the next opportunity that you have to take any action on this. The anticipated total value of the future GMP amendment is 41.4 million, with the total cost of the project being 48.3. As CMAR, J.E. Dunn and Henry Carlson have already been working closely with the architects, ensuring cost estimates are responsive to the building design and that the project will be on target financially. They've been meeting on Tuesdays, and I know many of you are aware of the fact that people disappear from this meeting and go over to those meetings, so you know that they've been working quite a bit. Important dollar amounts to know are that the pre-construction services are at a flat $50,000 and the construction phase fee will be 2.95% of the estimated cost of the work. Attached is a letter from James Widerich, who has done the contract for representing the Minnehaha County Commission, and also has worked closely with Dick Strasberg from Tegra, and this comes forward with both their support. You'll notice in there that Mr. Widerich makes the comment that 2.95% is a great number, and it's been negotiated well in terms of that contract. Questions I can answer.
Anything for Carol? If not, we'll need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments?
I would just comment that, I mean, there's obviously, these are long documents. They are somewhat standardized in that they're the AIA documents that are used typically in construction projects, but we had a team that has worked diligently for months now trying to get these finalized. And so, I'd really like to thank Carol and her team and Tegra, as well as the Woods Fuller Law Firm, all of which, you know, worked many hours on this. And I think we have a good product, so, a good contract. I'm happy with it.
I'd say shout out also to Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Barth, who sit on that group, and they have put in a lot of hours too, that the rest of us have not. So, Commissioner Bennigan?
The only thing that I would say is, from the conversations that I've overheard and being a little bit involved with, it seems like the construction manager-at-risk has already paid for themselves in the whole process of understanding the project and making a total project, a reduction of what we thought it could have potentially have been. So, I think it's a great concept and teamwork that's put this thing together at that price.
Okay. Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to concur with Commissioner Bender's comments, but also say that Warden Gromer and his staff have even put in more of an effort. And being that he's present, we should acknowledge that.
I apologize for any oversights, and I would say that he's put in a lot of work and there's a fair bit of work left to do, so they've been meeting regularly. And so, we're in the process right now where they're working on the design development phase, and we will be having a meeting, first building meeting in April, I believe.
April 3rd.
April 3rd, where we'll be going over that next phase, so.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your hours, because there's been a lot. And I would say you've gotten grayer, but that's not true.
No. We had avoided that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the construction management-at-risk contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is a legislative update, and it looks like Carol.
Good morning Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Yes, this is normally something Craig Dewey presents from our office, and Craig is in peer this week. He traveled out on Sunday, as did Commissioner Karski, who I think returned yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
From, from peer. So, I'm just going to highlight a few bills as to where these are all at. Senate Bill 86 is the one that started here, and that is to revise certain requirements when a local unit of government sells surplus property through a real estate broker. SB 86 is the repeal of the 90% appraisal requirement for selling surplus property through a broker. The bill was assigned to the House State Affairs and passed on Monday morning. Craig and Commissioner Karski were present yesterday morning and testified on that, and will now be on the House floor, probably either today or tomorrow. Hopefully is when we'll see that going through. HB 1076, you've heard a little bit about. This is a bill that actually came from one of our constituents in Minnehaha County, who also serves as a township supervisor. And he wanted to make sure that townships have the authority to use a tax levy for emergency medical services. We've been very fortunate in Minnehaha County that many, the majority of our townships do provide financial support for the ambulances, and they wanted to make sure that it was all in state statute and able to go through and do. This has passed both chambers and has been signed by the governor. I will drop down to House Bill 1257. Commissioner Hiebger was in peer last week, and I know this one was being held, I believe, at that particular time. This is to designate certain highways by townships and counties as no maintenance highways. The bill was amended following efforts by the SDACC, your state association, to change the vacation language to no maintenance roads, which benefits the counties. House Bill 1294 is a bill that was to increase the tax on certain alcoholic beverages by five cents a drink. That bill has died and was killed in committee. The interesting bill that's still alive is House Bill 1308. That was to provide for an excise tax on alcoholic beverage sales and the distribution of the revenue. Commissioner Hiebger provided great testimony last week on that. Surprising last-minute turn of events at that particular hearing, the bill was hog-housed. And Representative Willitson and Representative Jamison replaced the existing language of raising the alcohol taxes by 25 cents per drink. The revised version changed the existing distribution of alcohol taxes that was enacted after the 2016 legislative session. Currently, on those taxes, state gets 50%, city gets 25%, and county gets 25% as of 2016 legislative session. Their proposed amendment changed it so that the county would receive 50%, the state 25%, and municipalities 25%, doubling the amount of money counties currently receive. And I believe we receive right around $600,000?
Yes.
Is the dollar amount that we, that we receive through that. This has been a bill that, that has been driven by legislators, and we're enjoying working with them as they recognize the need for counties to be in a better situation financially in regards to public safety and recognizing the costs of alcohol that goes along with it. The bill did pass the full House last Thursday? Friday?
Friday.
Friday. By a 38 to 18 vote and is now headed to the Senate. And anticipate a committee hearing in a couple days on that one. The last bill that I'll just mention is Senate Bill 98, which is to revise certain provisions regarding the 911 emergency surcharge, the Public Safety 911 Emergency Fund, and revenue distribution, and to repeal the 911 emergency surcharge sunset clause. That's the most important part, is really that sunset clause, and that has passed to the full Senate in a 26 to 3 vote. It is scheduled for a hearing on March 1st in House Local Government. We've known for several years, there's been no secret, that sunset needs to be addressed, and this was the year to get that particular bill taken care of. Any questions that I may answer for you?
Let me just make a couple of comments. Commissioner Barth?
I was just going to say on the alcohol bills that they were not originally proposed by the counties, but our county and the state association has endorsed them, and I really appreciate that. And while I, I wish that taxes on alcohol would go up, I'm happy to get a greater share for Minnehaha County if we can get that through.
And actually, not just Minnehaha County, but all counties. And that bill is very much alive, and it was, as Carol stated, kind of a surprise out of where it came from and how it happened with the hog-house amendment. And just thanks to my friend Mark Willitson and Greg Jamison for their work on it. Like I said, it is very much alive. It wasn't anticipated that it would be, but it survived and I believe it's before Senate State Affairs at this point, which could be a high hurdle, but it is, it is doable, so. And the nice thing about it, it doesn't increase any taxes, it just redistributes the taxes that are already there, so.
I was just going to mention on House Bill 1257, which was a no maintenance bill, this is one that the association has been trying to get changed for quite a few years, and so they were happy to find a place that they could get a simple amendment and get that in there, and hopefully that will move through. And I was there for that 1308, at least for the, for the committee meeting, and it was very surprising. I mean, I was there and I didn't even know it was going to happen. I thought we were all done as they started voting stuff down, and all of a sudden there was a flurry and a hog-house, and it was quite amazing. And our representative Greg Jamison from Minnehaha County testified on the floor. I think, I didn't hear his testimony, but I think it was quite moving, and at the end of it, he just said, "If your county doesn't need any money to work on alcohol issues," he said, "then you don't need to vote for this." And I think that was very impactful. And it's very true, right? There isn't a county out there, this is not about Minnehaha County, this is about the There isn't a county out there, this is not about Minnehaha County, this is about the state of South Dakota, and it may give us $600,000, but people like Bennett County and Jackson County, who are struggling severely with, with alcohol issues and also the tax revenue that they do, or the revenue that they do receive, it'll give them about $25,000 to $30,000, and that's roughly. But it's a huge deal for all counties across the state of Minnesota, or Minnehaha, or state of South Dakota, and appreciate the work that they've done so far, so. There's no more legislative comments. We'll go on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I've asked Scott Anderson to come down and bring Diane to talk about work that they've done together, which is to all of our benefit.
Okay.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Commissioner Barth asked me to briefly just give you an update on our Change Finder. You may recall that as part of our pictometry GIS package, one of the add-ons was the Change Finder, which looks, it basically looks at the previous flyover, compares it with this flyover, and then runs a list of, of changes on structures. And it has worked out, we've been finding a number of, of structures. We've sent out to date 39 letters to property owners that have, we've, in the county that we've found that need to come in and get building permits. One of them, for example, was six structures, so he had to get six different building permits. It was decks, sheds, there are many, many structures. So it's not just one structure, it can be many, many structures. So Diane's office has been working well with our office. They find them, turn them over to our building inspector. We do a quick search to make sure that it, there wasn't a building permit, or if there's any other circumstances, then we will, we have been sending out letters, notifications. And like I said, 39 to date, we started about the first of the year, so in two months we've sent out 39 letters. And Dan Kissler, our building official, told me that the auditor, or the equalization has another stack of them that they're going to bring down today, so not, we sent out 19 yesterday, so. Many. And I'll let Diane also explain, and she's been working with the municipalities, and I, I don't have any control over what the municipalities are doing, but there is a huge benefit because it is getting structures on the tax rolls that may not have been, and it's also, the flip side of that is there are structures that are being taken off that we find are gone. So I'll let Diane speak to that. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Good morning, Diane Rekma, Equalization Office. We are about halfway done with the Change Finder, and like Scott said, we have been finding many buildings, pole buildings, grain bins, garages, additions to houses, you name it, we found it. But on the other hand, we've also been removing a lot of buildings. So I don't have any numbers for you at this time, but we plan on finishing this spring, so I'll let you know what the numbers are then.
Okay. Any questions for Diane or Scott? Jeff?
Diane, so obviously you've found many problems or issues in the county, but in the municipalities, I'm guessing there's even more. I mean, there's many, many parcels in Sioux Falls.
Right. There are mainly smaller things, a lot of decks, patios. There was one property that we did find an addition and also in a garage on it, so.
No comments?
We do go out and check them out.
And I would, I would just add to that, it isn't always trying to get away with something, because it happened to me, and it was a misunderstanding between and on my part, but or on our part, that misunderstanding that we didn't get the building permit, thinking the builder was getting it. And so, good to read your contracts and make sure you know what you're doing, but yeah, and the fine is double. So, I mean, you pay a building permit fine, but if you get caught, or if you don't get your building permit, it's double the cost, so. Just, for you that are, anyone who's building out there, just remember, just check and see if you need a building permit, and if your contractor got it.
It was your husband's oversight, as I recall.
It was. It's not my building.
Any other questions for Diane? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other liaison reports?
I would just comment that Jeff and I will both be going to Washington DC this next week, or actually, we're leaving, I'm leaving Thursday, Jeff's leaving Friday, and we're taking one staff member with us, and we will be going to the National Association of County Organizations, of which I sit on, the Justice and Safety National Board as a committee member. I'm also going to be attending another one on the Sixth Amendment, a roundtable discussion this, this week. So hopefully we'll bring you back lots of good information. It's always been, since we started going a few years back, it's been beneficial for us. We've brought in a lot of outside help and a lot of grants, opportunities for us, and a lot of really good information. So hopefully we'll come back with more again this year, so. And so I guess that means Jeff and I will both be gone next week, so. All right. That is the end of liaison reports. Are there, is there any new business? Any old business?
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. I just wanted this body to get a little report and an update. We've been over with Tom Greco, checking out our new quote-unquote "election headquarters", and we're real optimistic that things are going to work out. We've got some logistics issues that we've been looking at. IT has been over there with Jason, touring from IT. He's very familiar with elections, and he's also very familiar with that building. And so we think that it's going to be a real workable thing, and it'll work just as well as what we had downstairs here, maybe even better. We just hope that, you know, we can keep it until November, but I understand the jury's out on that, and we'll see how it goes, so.
I'm thankful that we alleviated your stress in so much easy.
You know how many mornings I woke up at 3:00 in the morning there?
And we said, "Don't worry. Don't worry. We'll take care of it."
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Any other old business? I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session immediately following the commission meeting for the purpose of South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-21 and 3.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second, actually, it'll be just a few minutes as we sign papers. We'll give you about 15 minutes or 10, 10 to 15 minutes in between. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.